Good evening and welcome. This is September 11th, 2023 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remains calm and exit the door you came in. If it is blocked, please exit the door to your right. If you plan to speak during the public comment period at the end of this meeting, please fill out one of those forms on the table near the door you came in and give it to our city clerk, Kim Nichols. At this time, no, we're going to have a moment of silence for 9/11. And remember some 9/11. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to invite Pastor Greg Carlson of the Park Seventh Day Adventist Church forward to provide the invocation. Is he here? No? Well, then we will bow our heads in silent meditation again. Jack, you would like to have a moment of reflection?
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we acknowledge the past wrongdoings from those who worked within these walls, who contributed to the lynching of Matthew Williams. We condemn the actions of anyone who was involved in this incident. Let us now observe a moment of silence in remembrance of Matthew Williams and all victims of racial violence. As we move forward, let us unite in the commitment to creating a safe and inclusive space where everyone's voice can be heard. Our goal is to come together as one community dedicated to building a prosperous and harmonious Salisbury. Thank you very much.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the July 17th, 2023 work session minutes, July 31st, 2023 special meeting minutes, August 7th, 2023 work session minutes, and Resolution Number 3282 approving the appointment of Chelsea Phillips Hutton to the Zoo Commission for Thermals September 2027. That's it.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Is Ms. Philip Hutton present in the room or on Zoom? If so, we appreciate you for volunteering to serve on our committee. Could I have a motion to approve Andy Quittsero? Resolution Number 3283?
So moved.
Second.
Andy?
Hi, Council. Resolution Number 3283, a resolution the City of Salisbury established to establish a public art committee. Whereas public art has been an increasingly visible part of Salisbury's life for more than 20 years, from thematic sculptures and public painted utility boxes downtown to murals downtown in neighborhoods and along major arteries to monumental sculptures in the gateway roundabout in the new downtown square. And whereas these projects have been community effort, they have been initiated by many of its nonprofit organizations, institutions, businesses, communities, local leaders in the city itself. Many projects have been completed by artists and sculptors at Eastern Shore. And whereas these projects are a testament to their remarkable pride, energy, and creative resources, one can find in Salisbury. The city's creative life includes a vigor programs of monthly Third Friday Art Walks and related events, and a fine arts program at Salisbury University, the faculty students visiting artists, and galleries built on its campus in downtown. And a variety of creative entrepreneurs in visual arts, designing community arts and digital arts. And whereas as a result of increased community interest, resources, and an expanded palette of opportunity, the city determined that it should develop a strategy for public art and launch a public art master plan to learn what kinds of public art people would like to see in Salisbury, to take stock in the city's public art opportunities, to prioritize said opportunities, to identify sustainable funding for public art, to establish policies and procedures that provide for an equitable use of city resources, that catalyze private sector and community resources, and to provide a framework based on best practices for implementing and maintaining public art projects. And whereas the public art master plan was completed in September 2023, lays down a footprint to achieve these goals and identifies development processes, planning tools, community insights, and key roles and responsibilities. And whereas the public art master plan identifies the need for a citywide public art committee to provide a community voice that advises on public art priorities and projects, now therefore be resolved by the Salisbury City Council that the City Public Art Committee hereby establishes with its current membership as followers. Now I'm going to hit the highlights so you all have a copy of this in your packet. Lines 41 through 70 discuss establishment and purpose of the committee. Lines 73 through 78 detail the authority of the committee. Lines 80 through 126 are the definitions. Lines 129 through 191 are the recommendations for the committee. And then lines 193 through line 206 details the membership for the committee. Lines 208 through 211 discuss the holding over and reappointment of committee members. Lines 213 to 216 discuss the county liaison position. Lines 218 to 238 describes the officers and the membership of the committee. Lines 236 to 238 describes the staff support for the committee. Lines 24 to 251 details the meetings and when they occur. Lines 256 to 259 discuss the minutes. 261 to 264 discuss the forum. 266 to 268 discuss compensation, which describes that there is a compensation. Everything is voluntary. And that is it.
Any questions or comments for the council?
It was a nice presentation last week. I think it's a fantastic idea, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the arts that come out of this.
And I'll just add, for anyone who's looking to check out the master plan, there was a wonderful presentation last week during the work session. So you can either go into PAC 14 to learn a bit more about it, or I believe this is in the work session packet from last week. So everyone will be able to have access to it and walk through it because it's extremely comprehensive and it's exciting to see that we're kind of reinvesting in the arts. It's one of the many things I like about Salisbury. We've done some great things in the past with it. I love those little power boxes that we kind of, you know, make them look a little nicer and a little fun. And it's a great way to kind of reengage our artists, so.
Yes. And I love, I'd just love to see the art period, the colors, the bright bold colors, you know, dignify and signify who we really are. It speaks volumes when we have tourists come in. They see great things. And most of our murals and things that are going on now is history. So we're establishing history that has already been established, but we're showing it so our generations after us know their history here in Salisbury, Maryland.
Andy, remind me again, what's the timeline for this to be up and running fully? When can people start submitting applications?
Yeah.
After the resolution is passed, we will.
Immediate. Perfect. Great, thank you.
Yeah. So, any more questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution 3283, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye, four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 2820 for second reading, Ms. Boucher?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Ordinance Number 2820, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, to approve.
You had to make the motion, sorry. No, you're correct. I love the excitement, though.
Yeah. Then I could second.
We had, you asked.
But we didn't.
You didn't do it. Oh, well, y'all still. Okay.
Michelle.
Michelle.
Second.
What, did y'all get stuck or something? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So ordinance Number 2820, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, to approve a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware. And this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
So are there any questions or comments? Just asking. None?
Just expanding for the public's knowledge that what this is for, April maybe? That this is going to go towards ballistic vests for canine?
Yes.
And we greatly appreciate the Heron Agility.
The donation.
For the donation.
Donations are great. When they come in, they're great. It saves the city money.
Really appreciate it.
And we do appreciate it. Okay? All those in favor of ordinance 2820 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the chair votes aye, the vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 2822 for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Ordinance Number 2822, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to convert Calvert Street from U.S. 13 Business North to 300 feet west to one-way westbound traffic only. This is also before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Are there any questions or comments?
I think it's a good idea. I just want to make sure that we roll that out before we change it, you know, do a public presentation.
We will. I'm pretty sure we will. All those in favor of ordinance 2822 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye, the vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 2823 for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Ordinance Number 2823, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for legal services. This is before you for second reading. As mentioned, there have been no changes or amendments.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance Number 2823 for second reading, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The vote is four to zero, chair votes aye. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 2824 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Ordinance Number 2824, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Department of Field Operations budget for increased overtime. Whereas solid waste collection and disposal in the city is of vital importance, and whereas the sanitation division's refuse pickup footprint has expanded considerably in recent years due to expansive residential development, and whereas the majority of the sanitation division's vehicles continue to function beyond their expected life cycles, causing a need for both regular and unexpected maintenance. And whereas the sanitation division within the Department of Field Operations has experienced a significant increase in the use of overtime that surpasses the current budget configurations, and whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city. Section 1 of ordinance 2824 reads, "The City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2024 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: A, increase the current year surplus account 01000-469810 by $57,000; and B, increase sanitation division's overtime account account number 32061-501021 by that same amount, which is $57,000."
Any questions or comments?
Just one comment over here. Just something for us to be mindful of for next cycle. This is something I think we're going to increasingly be having conversations with as we are seeing more housing move into the area. The strain it's going to put on a lot of our services. Just something I wanted to put up for the council to consider for next cycle.
Anyone else? All call for the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2824 for first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, the vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2825 for first reading? Ms. Boucher?
So moved.
Oh, go ahead.
Second.
And Angela. Ms. Boucher?
Certainly. Ordinance Number 2825, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Arts Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $17,846 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with a public art fund for the Arts and Entertainment District. Whereas the City of Salisbury submitted an Arts and Entertainment District operating grant application to the Maryland State Art Council, a unit of the State of Maryland Department of Commerce for financial assistance in carrying out community development activities, specifically to include assistance with creating a public art fund to be used toward creating a nurturing climate for the arts and to ensure that the role of the arts and the lives of our citizens in the city continues to grow and play a significant part in their welfare and educational experience. And whereas MSAC has awarded grant funds to the city in the amount of $17,846, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance Number 2825 reads, "Acting Mayor Jack Heath on behalf of the city is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland State Arts Council for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $17,846 to be allocated for assistance with a public art fund for the Arts and Entertainment District. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget is hereby amended as follows: A, increase MSAC revenue account number 10500-424105-XXX by $17,846; and B, increase operating expense account by that same amount, which again is $17,846."
Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 2825 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2826 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2826, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for a downtown ambassador program. Whereas the City of Salisbury is planning to launch a downtown ambassador program, and whereas the city has determined an additional $87,000 will be required for this program. And whereas the police department has determined $87,000 is available to be transferred to support the program due to vacancies in the FY 2024 budget. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of the $87,000 as provided herein above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury. Section 1 of ordinance 2826 reads, "Acting Mayor John R. Heath on behalf of the city is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the downtown ambassador program in the amount of $87,000." Section 2, the City of Salisbury's FY 24 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Decrease expenditure for account number 21021-501002 with description salaries non-clerical amount $87,000. Increase expenditure for account 11600513000 with account description professional services by that same amount, which again is $87,000."
Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? All in favor of ordinance Number 2826 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye, the vote is four to zero. Could I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2827?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second, Angela.
Ordinance Number 2827, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending Chapter 5.69 of the Salisbury City Code to include exclusions from the paper carryout bag fee. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of Title V of the City Code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to keep the provisions of Title V current, comply with present community standards and values, and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Annotated Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as mayor and council deem necessary, to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas on November 28th, 2022, mayor and council passed ordinance Number 2756 prohibiting retail establishments from providing plastic carryout bags to customers and mandating that a fee be charged to the consumer for the provision of a paper carryout bag, which is now codified in Chapter 5.69 of the City Code. Whereas Chapter 5.69 went into effect July 1 of this year, 2023, and the city has determined that Chapter 5.69 requires amendment to preserve the public health and to balance such public health concerns with the necessary and appropriate measures to protect the environment. Whereas mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amending Chapter 5.69 to provide certain limited exclusions to the charging of a fee for paper carryout bags. And whereas mayor and council have determined that the amendments of Chapter 5.69 of the Salisbury City Code shall be set forth and adopted as below. The language that is being added or changed to Chapter 5.69 is the bolded and underlined language in this ordinance, which is in your agenda, and I will call your attention to it. It's just in one section found in line 81 through 86, and it is an exclusion to the prohibition on providing plastic carryout bags and the fee that's charged. So the exclusion will read as follows. Exclusions. A retail establishment shall not charge, a retail establishment shall not collect a charge required under Chapter 5.69.02OB for any paper bag. A food service facility gives a customer or third-party delivery service to take food sliced or prepared to order from the food service facility. A pharmacy gives to a patient or customer that contains a prescription drug or which constitutes an essential part of the packaging of the product, the product itself, or which was packaged in such a manner at the time of the manufacture. And that is the one and only change to Chapter 5.69.
Are there any questions or comments in reference to this ordinance?
I hope it relieves a lot of the tension in regards, especially the prepared foods, the fast food places, fresh foods. I'm hoping that this really does the trick.
Anyone else? All in favor of ordinance Number 2827 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero. Thank you. Thank you. Now it is time for public comments, and I'm hoping that everyone who wishes to make public comments have filled out a form as you come in the door. And you have four, exactly four minutes to speak. And when you get to that 30 seconds, Mayor, I won't beg, I'll tap lightly and let you know that you have 30 seconds left to present whatever you have. And the first person is Jeff Dean.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Jeff Dean from Middle Boulevard. An update on the recovery housing conversation that I have discovered this week. I made a phone call to the local behavioral health department officer to inquire as to the processes, local processes, for certifying or licensing recovery homes. What I learned from that process is that the local health department does not have a hand in licensing or certifying recovery homes. That that is done by the state health department. The role of the local health, behavioral health department would be to be the local inspector, this is what I was told, the local inspector for the state health department. I asked if they had ever done any inspections on local housing, and she told me, after pausing for a minute, she told me that she thought that would be confidential information. I asked her to send me the enabling language that would require that to be confidential, and she emailed me, but I have not had a chance yet to look at it. I have also not contacted the state health department yet. I did ask her what the content of those inspections would be, and she said simply that it would be a visual inspection with no actual inspection points listed. And when I started inquiring as to what specific inspection points might be included in that, she was confused by my questions and told me to talk to the state. What it leaves us basically is yet another claimed safety check in the process of certifying and licensing recovery homes that does not really hold up to much scrutiny. So we don't have a local county health department oversight of the recovery housing. So as we move forward with drafting, we being the city, you guys, with drafting legislation or ordinances to regulate hopefully recovery housing and how they are governed, I hope we keep in mind the story from Somerset County that was in the Washington Post last week in which the homeless shelter down there was basically shut down, lost its funding because of mismanagement, because of violations of best practices in finances and financial reporting, which has resulted in my understanding of a homeless population now displaced, arriving here in Salisbury, creating conflicts with Salisbury-based homeless people. The stakes are real. I want to remind everybody that a process protects the clients in those homes. It does not displace them if everything is done properly. An improperly done process inevitably ultimately displaces a lot of people who are depending on that system to work well. So Homes for Hope is speaking publicly about suing the city if this does not go their way. I trust that we have the stomach for a lawsuit. I believe we have a good position based on the regulations that I'm reading. And I would remind everybody that the stakes are very high, that there are real human beings in the middle of this who need this process to work well so that it maintains itself under scrutiny from any direction. I believe that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Next is Ten, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Council President Jackson. Thank you very much, Council President Jackson, Councilwoman Gregory, Councilwoman Blake, Councilwoman Outman. Everybody take note of that. One, two, three, four. Good evening, my name is Timothy Mayor, and I'm a resident of the city. I don't need to tell you how long I've been here because quite honestly, I don't think it really matters. This is the point for the public square. This is the point where people come here and exercise their voice, and really, this is democracy in action. Two points to make quickly. The first though, however, I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't take note of, I'm only here on my feet because of the efficiency, the professionalism, the compassion, and the care of the city of Salisbury Emergency Medical Services. Since January, unfortunately, that has happened for me multiple times, and I'm incredibly grateful to the men and women of the Emergency Medical Services. I cannot speak loud enough about when you're in that situation, nothing else really matters. They show up and they take care of it. And I appreciate that incredibly, and I'm not sure that they get all the acknowledgement that they should. So thank you to the men and women in the uniform of the Emergency Medical Services that do their job twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I'm a recipient of that now, and I'm incredibly grateful. The first thing that I really want to talk about though is, hold on to your seat, dogs. That's right, dogs. Not all dogs, not all dog owners, but dogs. Do you know that right now, in the city of Salisbury, in a residential area, you can operate a dog breeding business, a dog breeding operation? That's happening. Animal control, I'm not sure how they do their job. I beg you, for the first time that I can remember, Wycomico County actually just passed a stricter, more effective, actually efficient ordinance about dogs in the county. Dogs care, their health, and the operation of things for and related to dogs. We don't have that. A fifty-dollar fine for a citation. Fifty bucks? That doesn't go very far anymore. That's milk, bread, and toilet paper at the grocery store right now. So I seriously beg of you to take a look at the county. It would be great if it could mirror the same thing and have the same kind of effectiveness. I don't need to be asked, well, you gotta keep a log, well, you gotta take video, well, you gotta record it all. That's not my job to create evidence, but that's the way it is right now. So, dog regulation, please. The second thing is my other second favorite street, Waverly Drive. Thank you for acknowledging what needed to happen there. I stood here five years ago before this body and said, you're gonna do that wonderful bicycle master plan? Please recognize the dangers that are involved and asked for enforcement on Waverly Drive. Now that it's done, because, why? What was the whole focus? Funding for pedestrian safety improvement nationwide. Well, it's paved. It's a speedway now because it's actually flat. There's no ordinance, there's no obstructions or anything. So once again, I make the request to law enforcement to enforce the speed limit, the safety, the truck restrictions that actually are posted for Waverly Drive, because now that it's all smooth again, all the cutting and jiving that happens to get off of Route thirteen because they don't want to do the S curve at rush hour, they come right on Waverly Drive. We all walk there, I walk there. I don't want to be standing here on crutches because I've been hit because of speeding on Waverly Drive. So I encourage that effort to go out to law enforcement to step it up, at least while it's new and fresh and smooth as ice. Thank you very much.
Barbara Doris, our next speaker.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Barbara Doris. I live on Middle Boulevard, and my concern, which I'm sure has been addressed to you already, is the recovery homes that have come up on our street. One is right next door to me. I have no problem with recovery, I'm all for it, but I'm a little concerned about the neighborhood. There's upwards, if not more, eight gentlemen in the house next door to me. The traffic and the different cars, unknown, we're all very good neighbors, and we all pretty much know who lives. I've been on Middle Boulevard for thirty years, so we all know who's around. Now there's a lot of activity, different cars, different people, people coming from the recovery home, going out to a car for five minutes, going back in, and this goes on day and night. I was leaving for New York one Friday, and I got up at three o'clock in the morning because you gotta beat the New York traffic, and three fifteen, one of the residents next door came out and got in a van, and they sat in front of my house for forty minutes while I packed up my car, my dog, and everything else. I wasn't sure I wanted to leave. I felt like they were hasting, and I don't, you know, I don't like to accuse, but it's just activity that we've never had to worry about. Then in, this was in February when that house was converted. Then in July, two twenty-three Middle Boulevard was converted to another recovery home with upwards of eight or more men living in that house. Middle Boulevard, Middle Boulevard is only two tenths of a mile long, so that's three-hundred-and-fifty-two yards. We have sixteen or more men recovering with a daycare center right across the street that has been there as long, if not longer than I have. Where does this stop? There's seven oh eight Riverside Drive, which is less than a half mile away from Middle Boulevard. There's six men living in that. So within less than a mile, we have twenty-two or more recovering addicts, and I have to say, the relapse rate is quite high, having looked it up. I won't go into numbers, but it is very high, especially for opioids. Where does it stop? There's gonna be another house on our street going on the market soon. Who's, who's regulating this? Are they gonna buy that and put eight to ten more men on our street, recovering? Something's wrong. And from what I understand, the city council didn't know about it, the city didn't know about it. So who's regulating all of this? And what are the regulations? So, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Sharon issue.
First of all, I'm gonna repeat what Tim said about Waverly Drive in a different way. Waverly Drive, to me, makes sense, like Riverside Drive, but you might want to add some humps like we have on West College, so that might help with speeding. Russell Avenue, thank you, Megan, for giving me an update on Russell. There are grates going in there with the cliffs, dips. I'm asking you to please do not start Eastern Shore Drive. I realize it is in the pipeline, and I understand it will be a wonderful addition. I'm not opposed to any of these changes, but correct me if I'm wrong, I think that Mayor Heath mentioned something about, in the last six months or so, something about, let's look at the projects we already have that are going, and let's evaluate them, not just say, okay, done, check the box, but evaluate them before you go into something new. So I'm really asking that you honor what Mayor Heath has suggested, to really look at what we have in place. My reason for asking this is that, it's my understanding, I'm a new kid on the block, I haven't been following these things like I should have, but I'm assuming grant money has paid for all of these street fixes that we have done, which is fabulous, even with matching funds. I would like to know who's paying for the redos? Who paid to redo Waverly? Who will repay if by what we've done with Waverly and some of the others? Who's gonna be paying to redo Fitzwater Street as well as Isabella with all the little jutouts that they have going? My suggestion, if possible, I don't know the particulars, just a thought, the twelve million dollars we've received from the Department of Transportation, can that be, any of that used to do any redos and review projects that Mayor Heath has talked about and evaluated before we start one more thing? So I'm just hoping that that will be considered. So thank you for your time.
Our next person to speak will be Nancy Rosum.
I'm gonna go amazed for a minute. Hi. I'm well, thank you. Hope you all are too. I'm Nancy Roysum, I live on Beaver Dam Drive, and I've been a Salisbury resident since two thousand and five. And one of my concerns this evening, kind of segues into the comment that was just made about taking huge gifts and grants without budgeting for the maintenance of what is gonna result. There's a Trojan horse of big gifts in the form of million-dollar grants and incentives for big building projects that results in an invasion of costs that assault taxpayers later. I have just a couple of small examples, but I'm sure the Eastern Shore Drive, Vision Zero, and some of the new developments around town have not been factored into the maintenance budget for future years, and they will come back and haunt us at budgeting time, such as what we looked at today, which was ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-four to increase And in the city staff's own words, in recent months, a combination of an expanded residential footprint of the city of Salisbury, as well as other maintenance issues, have cost additional quote-unquote unforeseen costs, which I believe a good fiscal manager would have been able to foresee. That's one example. Now another example is that in, now this is going back in history, back in two thousand and six, there was a deed of preservation easement attached to a one hundred fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the Maryland Historic Trust to the city to repair and construct a pavilion, the pavilion in City Park, and I believe three of the major bridges in City Park. And I believe with that money, the new pedestrian bridge at Ben's Red Swings was constructed. Well, due to lack of any maintenance whatsoever that I can see, and I walk in the parks, you know, for years on a day-to-day basis, there's been no maintenance. All of us know if we have decks, we have to seal and paint them. Bridges, rails, that sort of thing, have to be maintained. Well, as a result, right now, we have some horrible disrepair on all these bridges and facilities in City Park. Once again, we got a big gift to build and repair this stuff, but we did not factor it into our maintenance budget. Basically, unfortunately, City Parks, I don't believe gets much of any maintenance budget. But this is typical of other areas of the city. So what I have to circulate around is something that I have sent before in, in an email to the city council, and it's photographs of the City Park bridges, and there's also some new photographs of the damage and disrepair of the bridges. And I do hope, this being a major concern of mine, that we can factor in these things when we approve big new construction projects.
Thank you. Yes, have a copy of the Bureau Historic Trust and the, okay. Thank you. Next speaker will be Holly Worthington.
Good evening, I'm Holly Worthington. I own three hundred West Main Street downtown. Anyone who attended the city's open and closed meetings on June twentieth believe that during the closed session, the council reached its decision to approve the contract to sell all of parking lots eleven and fifteen and part of parking lot one to a developer, and then simply voted to do so without further discussion of the contract when it returned to an open session. Now the council, now the open meetings compliance board has ruled that discussion by the council during the closed session was unlawful because it should not have occurred except in an open meeting so that public could watch and listen. Here's a key part of the compliance board's ruling. The discussion went beyond the mere interchange between the client public body and its lawyer. As the council's closed session summary indicates, the city administrator also fielded questions from the council. During this and other parts of the closed session discussion, the council was not merely consulting with council to obtain legal advice. We conclude that the council violated the act when it closed its meeting to the public under the legal advice exception, but then engaged in a closed session discussions that exceeded the bounds of that exception. In our complaint to the board, we asked that it recommended the minutes and recording of these closed meetings should be released to the public. In a footnote in its opinion, the board indicated that it was not authorized to make such a recommendation. However, if the council respects the residents of Salisbury, it will release the minutes and audio recording of the closed session. The Meetings Act authorized the council to do so either at the request of any person or on its own initiative by a majority vote of the members who are present and vote in favor of unsealing the minutes in any recording. I hereby request that the council do so properly, if not tonight, then at your next meeting. Although legal advice dated by Ms. Patel during the closed meeting can be withheld, it would serve the public's best interest to know just what she said in regards to this meeting. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Next speaker, Robert Taylor.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, another longtime city resident, like the second speaker, maybe not, maybe not quite as long, maybe longer, who knows? Hopscotching a few things, this will be the last regular meeting of the council before the Folk Festival in a couple of weekends, and when you're down there, I hope it all goes well, including the weather. But while you're walking around, just remember, this will be the last one, if all the development that's been planned goes through, where you will have parking on Lot Fifteen, parking on Lot Eleven, parking on the portion of Lot One that is not being developed with the park, and also on Lot Ten up at the corner of Thirteen and Fifty, that real large lot. They'll all be gone, as will Lot Thirty, which is just across the river, just off of what I consider the main part of the downtown plaza. They won't be there anymore, if the development goes through, possibly next year, depending on how fast the development goes. But that's just a point to be made, because the parking essentially will be gone. I want to reiterate the comment about not Waverly Drive, but Eastern Shore Drive. I'm over on the east side by the city park, and I don't use Waverly to stay off of Thirteen, I use Eastern Shore Drive to stay off of Thirteen. That's why it was built. It was planned by Pete Cooper, who probably was the most eminent city engineer we've had. He happens to also have been the person that built the house I live in, so I have a lot of respect for him. It hasn't fallen down. And it's just, I thought this project had actually been stopped, I didn't really- And, it's just, I thought this project had actually been stopped, I didn't realize it was going to go through, because by converting that to just one lane in each direction, you're just building in traffic jams. That road is rather heavily used at times, not always, but at times. There are also a lot of right-hand turns into commercial property along that section of road, so that's going to clog it up. So I think the best thing to be, to be done with that is just to put it in a scrap heap, not even start it, and I hope you all will give serious consideration to that. I also think you ought to give serious consideration, I mentioned about the parking lots, to really rethinking what you did on June 20th, when you approved that contract with the developer. Maybe it's been signed, I don't know, there's been no announcement to that effect, but if it's not been signed, I think you really ought to reconsider that decision. We now know that the closed session before you voted was unlawful, and there are a number of reasons to reconsider that, including what it's going to do to downtown, which is essentially to devastate it. So, that's all I've got to say, and I thank you.
Next speaker is Jonathan Eunice.
I had a good teacher. My name is Jonathan Eunice, and I come here as a property owner, a taxpayer, a resident, a concerned citizen, and an attorney who represents indigent and struggling people trying to turn their life around. When I, recently, my fiancee purchased a place on Union Ave, and I began to move in with her, and as I was moving out of my place on Bellinity Drive, I learned of the law that says there has to be a single family in any one place, that these are single-family dwellings. And I thought that was odd, but I ultimately did nothing with it, because frankly, it didn't really affect me. I learned that the purpose of that was because frankly, we didn't want the college kids taking over. That was my understanding of what I looked up. Of course, the irony there is obvious, as the Ross looms over downtown, and we find ourselves in a housing crisis. I'm concerned that this limitation precludes people from finding affordable housing. It doesn't protect us from kids taking over, it's antiquated, and frankly, it's probably unconstitutional. It just is, it probably violates the Fair Housing Act, and I have concerns as to the city's exposure. And that concerns me as a taxpayer. I'm also concerned, and I decided to come here today, when I learned that many of my clients who rely on housing, that it does not fall into a single-family house, such as Homes For Hope, and other recovery housing. It's true that the relapse rates of people going through recovery is relatively high. It's also true that it is significantly lower for people who are ready and choose to live in recovery homes. These recovery homes face or provide significant oversight. Most people who enter them are on a blackout period where they can't even call or see other people. They're subject to frequent urine drugs tests, which are randomized, they frequently can't go places, and everything has to be approved. I am concerned about what would happen if this law, this ordinance is used against those places, and those people lose their housing. Those people lose their recovery, and the city doesn't benefit from that. I'm concerned that that file, about, as a taxpayer, about the laws that that may implicate, and how that exposes us as a city, and me as a taxpayer. I'm concerned because substance use disorder is recognized under the ADA, and so discriminating against people who have a substance use disorder is unconstitutional or unlawful. I implore everyone to consider that. I implore, if you want to see what recovery looks like, the Drug Court graduation comes October 13th, and I recommend you come and see that. These people have turned their lives around, have spent hundreds of hours giving back and turning everything around, and it is a miracle to watch. So I thank you, and I ask that you consider changing the ordinance.
Next speaker will be Von Siggers.
Good evening. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate you ladies, council president, vice president, I don't know if this is historical enough, but a whole council of women, we've got to be in good hands, right? Got to, got to see something different for a moment, just want to congratulate you all.
Thank you so much. Now, this is going to be the harder one for me. Chad Papakowicz. I was going to, yeah, I almost had it now.
Mayor, council, thank you. My name is Chad Papakowicz, I live on 228 Middle Boulevard, obviously, there's a reoccurring theme here, at this meeting and previous meetings. Been living on the street for 26 years. I'm a teacher here in the city of Salisbury, work at Salisbury Middle. I have two young daughters. What I'm coming in here tonight is to talk and stand here in solidarity with my neighbors on Middle, about the concerns that we have on our street with the two houses. I have nothing against anybody who is recovering from any type of, whatever it may be. Personally, we have family members who are recovering acts as well, so we understand the situations and the struggles that they go through. However, as a father of two young daughters on a street where there are numerous kids playing freely, I have to now worry about the density of the occupants of these two houses. And so that's my biggest concern. Moving forward, I think we need to look at, you all are going to have to make a decision on how this is going to play out, and you are going to set precedence, not only within the city of Salisbury, with the state of Maryland, and who knows, it could be a national thing, that they could be calling back on the decisions that you all make here in the upcoming weeks. I was one of the first, after finding out, to kind of get the ball rolling. I talked to Councilwoman Outen about this, and informed her about it, which she had no necessarily background, knowledge of it, and I think that's our biggest concern, is this was kind of done under the cover of darkness, and then when speaking civilly with the owner of the establishment, we were unable to get truthful answers, which now just raises our suspicion. I'm not into Orwellian type of living, but I feel that's what we have to do now on our street. We have to watch, and watch, and watch, and watch, and I don't want to do that. Us neighbors don't want to do that. We are strong, we're together, we're united, we are taxpayers, we are voters as well. So I just hope, moving forward, you all think about that, and, you know, once again, I'm not going anywhere, I'm here, I just paid my house off, I'm good, right? But I'm doing more, I'm improving my house, our street is a beautiful street. I bring this up all the time, Halloween, it's the street to be, all right? And that says something about the street. The daycare next to it, my two daughters went there from when they were itty-bitties, until they went to kindergarten. For those family members who drop their kids off on our street, our safe street, at this establishment that has a great reputation, once the word gets out that within 350 feet of each other, there could be 16, 20 men who could possibly have a record, I think that's going to possibly change that business, and that's a positive business. So, once again, thank you for your time, and I hope you all think very deeply about this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Monica Brooks, President of the NAH, Wyomkow County, NAH
Good evening. Glad to see all of you, and I wanted to just say that I'm looking forward to us as a city moving forward. I'm looking forward to our city having true representation and diversity and understanding, so that when we brought up this issue regarding this, this old firehouse, it's really not just the old firehouse, it's just a representation of systemic issues. So, I'm glad that the council is bringing us on board to, so we can have discussion about a resolution or some sort of official apology from the city. We're looking forward to that official policy coming from the city, and this is not just about a building, it's about bringing in, you know, just acknowledging, for example, just last week, there was, you might have seen in the paper, the exonerations of two men who were in prison for almost 30 years, for something they did not do. As a result of that, the state's attorney said, "I apologize on behalf of the state's attorney and the state of Maryland." She wasn't there, she didn't do it, but it was the thing, so we're saying, for this, on behalf of this city of Salisbury. And it's not just the city, I mean, there's, you know, we've talked to law enforcement, there's other entities, but this is going to be an ongoing discussion, we're looking, as I've said many times, to partner with the city in this regard, and just bring some healing and closure in areas such as, you know, Old Georgetown Neighborhood, as well as, you know, this firehouse and its connection to the lynching, and so that we can get to a place where even people of color that are saying they still don't even feel welcomed in the city of Salisbury downtown area, that we are sending out a message that this city is truly inclusive of everyone. So I thank you all, and I look forward to seeing you at next council meeting.
Thank you. So I have read of all the names of the speakers, and we thank you, and I actually thank you for being diligent and going by the time, see how things work, were wonderful, and we're here to the time limit that has been given by the city. So I thank you for that, and I thank you for your comments as well, and your concerns. They're very well-welcome here, and hearing from you all is what makes things different and make the changes here in our city. So we thank you for coming and speaking out, because without you speaking out, how can we ever know how you feel, and what you want, and what you need? So we thank you again, and this is coming from the city of Salisbury. We now have administration comments.
Sure, thank you, council president. First, I want to recognize a member of our audience, it is our new communications director, he started today with Mr. Sean Yonker. So if you have problems, just send them, and also, he already joined us today, it was his first day with our team as the Director of Housing Community Development, so we're excited to have him on board. Second, the Urban Folk Festival is coming up in a couple of weekends, we're really looking forward to that event, so please come out and enjoy the festivities, that is September 22nd to 24th. Then, as always, we've talked about this a couple of times, during public comments, there's a lot of different questions and concerns people have, I get a copy of all the slips, if there's anything I can address with you on a one-on-one basis, especially, you know, there's questions about Eastern Shore Drive, and some other items, I feel free to, I will connect with you and try to even answer any of those questions in greater detail, if you'd like, or even with me, or someone on my team to get this concern addressed. I just want to let people know that that, that's...
Thank you for taking the freedom of my time. Didn't say that Friday the 15th is, or Friday, Arts Committee is the, and we've got some great artists, let me tell you, and you'll see them on Friday night. Second one, I'm going to be slightly sarcastic, on the side of the school buses with the yellow lights and the stop sign that goes by, that means you shouldn't go past them. We've seen the second one in two weeks, go right by, and guess where it was? Eastern Shore Drive. Eastern Shore Drive. So please, if you see somebody do it, honk at them, you know, something's got to change because somebody is going to get hurt, and maybe killed. The other thing I'd like to say is that I saw an ambulance coming down 13 from Princess Anne the other day, and there was traffic, it was during rush hour, and for about five and a half minutes, no one pulled over to let him go by. Now, if that was one of your family members in that ambulance, you'd want somebody to pull over. Find a place everybody can pull over. That's all I have to say on that, and as always, if you can give blood, please do. We are still short, and I'm sure Angela will second that, but thank you all for coming out, we appreciate it, we appreciate the time you take, and look forward to the next meeting. Thanks.
Michelle?
I just want to remind you just open up the Arts Committee, so if you're looking to apply, you can do so on the city website, it'd be really great to have that as a main link on the front page, hint, hint, Sean. First order of business, getting that up there, so folks can apply, there are several spots on it, really looking forward to seeing what this committee comes up with. You know, it was mentioned in some, in one of the comments, that, you know, there's disrepair in the parks and things, I want to remind some folks that we did go through a COVID pandemic, where that was not the focus of attention, and we've been playing catch-up ever since. So, let's give our field ops guys a little bit of grace, and give them time to catch up. I know that they've been working hard, especially in the weather that we've had lately. And the third thing I wanted to mention was that we are still in need of volunteers for the Folk Festival, so if you'd like to volunteer, you go to MDFolkfest.com/volunteer, and you can volunteer for any of the positions, I'm personally partial to the Bucket Brigade, it's a lot of fun, you get to go to all the shows, and dance, and have fun, and raise money while you're at it for a good cause, so I invite everybody to volunteer for the Folk Festival.
Okay, Angela.
Well, yes, I am going to talk about our blood donations. In our region, we're constantly in a critical need for blood, if you are healthy enough and fortunate enough to be healthy enough, please donate blood, one pint can save up to three lives. Also, consider donating plasma, being an organ donor, these things are very critical. So make your, I actually have an appointment this Saturday, I think, Saturday morning for my, for my next donation. The other thing that is very dear to me is vestibular disorders, and you're going to hear more about that from me in about a week or two. Oftentimes, it's totally about balance, and many people have balance issues, it could be from a stroke-induced, it could be from an accident, head injury, definitely anything that impairs the inner ears, and it really does impact the people, the quality of people's lives. And often, it's one of these invisible disorders, so there's more and more information and research about vestibular disorders, so I'll be, I'll be bringing more information to you about that. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening.
Yeah, so, first thing, as I always say, thank you all for coming out, a particular thank you to my Middle Boulevard residents from my district, for continuing that conversation. It's lovely, honestly, to see residents continually and staying engaged with, on the issues, so thank you on that. So thank you on that. Additionally, Mr. Eunice, I would love to continue a conversation afterwards, just to circle back with you after this meeting. And again, thank you, Mr. Shiel, for connecting with us on some of the Waverly concerns, as with Tim. I know that especially in my district, as I'm door knocking this week, connecting with residents, that has been a point of topic that has come up often, is the speeding in the neighborhoods. And I know that at our Department of Infrastructure, we're looking to tackle that in a variety of ways, through various infrastructure programs. But Waverly is definitely on our horizon on how we can tackle some of the speeding issues there. I wanted to bring up another point. I did a ride-along last week with the Salisbury Police Department. Had a phenomenal chance just to see firsthand a lot of the day-to-day of our men and women at our, you know, at the front lines, what they're experiencing, a lot of the community conversations they're having, a lot of the stresses that they're seeing for community services. So I will say, they seemed extremely thrilled about the ambassador program. They loved the idea of that partnership. So I was happy to hear that they were equally as thrilled to see this moving forward downtown. Think it's going to help ease a lot of the pressure that they're experiencing to be everywhere in the city right now. Additionally, I wanted to bring up to some residents, we do have an upcoming event in my district, in District 3. After COVID, I'm sure not many of you might be aware, some of you might be, the Camden Neighborhood Association kind of disintegrated as a result of COVID. And after talking with a couple of residents, there seems to be a really big need to revive that group. I feel like this is the year for community. A lot of residents are wanting to feel re-engaged and connected. So I've partnered with a couple of the neighbors in the community who are really big proponents of this and we're trying our best to revive this group. So September 19th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we will be hosting a first meeting. We're calling it Patio Chats at the Newton Community Center. It's just going to be a great Kickstarter for us to engage with you all, find things that might be of interest, things that you want to bring back to council. It's going to be a great line of connection for you to stay engaged, not only with the council, with me, but we know from time to time, we'll also make sure that you can get connected with various directors and our law enforcement agency here. So I strongly encourage anyone from 3 or beyond 3 to come out to that, like I said, September 19th from 6 to 7. So thank you, guys.
Okay. I kind of did talk to Jack, our mayor, with the school buses and the children boarding the buses and being dropped off at their destinations. I've seen several vehicles that had passed the bus. And I also want to reiterate to parents, make sure your children walk in the crosswalks when they're crossing the street. Make sure you're watching your children as they cross. Because I've seen young kids, I'm basically too young to be crossing those crosswalks by themselves. So I think the parents, I know a lot of parents work, but make sure you have someone out there with your child when your child is crossing, especially over there in the Pemberton area. Parsons Road is very busy and I have seen the cars fly through that neighborhood. Also, in my district, I have seen an overwhelming amount of opioid use. And it concerns me. It really, really concerns me. And I'm asking that the city, the officers, do something about it, work with the communities, whatever. However, we need to get this done, needs to get done. When I see people laying on the ground, when I see a person get off a bicycle because he can't ride the bicycle and he's basically falling to the ground because he is under the influence. When I get a phone call from one of my friends to tell me that she's got someone in front of her door who is high and I have to go over to her house with Narcan, it's a problem. It's a problem and I see it every single day, every single day. And it makes my heart weak. We need to do something. We're worrying about some of the things that we shouldn't be worried about. And these are some of the things that we should be worried about. This is a big concern to me. Because it's in my community, it's in all communities. It's just not in my, it's not in my district, it's everywhere. So this is a concern for me. I remember some years ago, we were speaking about this and we were in tune with it and we were doing something about it. And now we've just actually reluctantly just drew back from it. Well, if you draw back from something, it doesn't get better, it gets worse. So I'm asking that the city, the city council, our public safety, get together and let's work together to do something to help with this issue. I am so afraid that actually, I'm going to walk out of my door one day and find somebody dead. And that's scary to me. I'm afraid that I'm going to walk out my door and I'm accosted by a drug addict because they don't care. And when they need their drug, they don't care who they attack. So we need to get on the ball and do something, some kind of intervention, do some kind of programming or something. But something needs to be done. Not just, like I said, it's just not in my district or my community, it's in every community. I had a peaceful weekend this weekend and now my wheels will be turning. And I thank everyone for coming, speaking of your concerns. It means a lot. Whether you think it does or not, it means a lot. It really means a lot. And when I see my seniors like Mr. Taylor come and speak, it means a lot because it takes an effort for him to come out. And I'm not being, you know, we see each other, but it does, it takes a lot. I see this gentleman right here, Mr. Mayor. It takes a lot. So continue to keep coming, speak. Your voice means a lot, your presence means a lot. And we're more powerful in numbers than anything. So thank you so much. I have something I need to read about the open meeting compliance. Compliance alleges Salisbury City Council violated the Open Meeting Act by improperly discussing a contract in closed session. The council responded that it properly closed the meeting to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The council was entitled to enter closed session to ask questions of its attorney, but because the council's closed session discussion went beyond the receipt of legal advice, the council violated the act. The state of Maryland Open Meeting Compliance Board reviews of the closed session minutes reveal that members of the council received legal advice during the closed session, but the discussion went beyond the mere interchange between the client, public body, and its lawyer. As the council's closed session summary indicates, the city administrator also fielded questions from the council. During this and other parts of the closed session discussion, the council was not merely consulting with council to obtain legal advice. Because the council did not invoke any other exception under 3-305B, that would have permitted such discussion to take place in a closed session. The conclusion is that the council violated the act when it closed the meeting to the public under the legal advice exception of 3-305B7, but then engaged in closed session discussion that exceeded the bounds of that expectation. I'd like to thank you for coming and pray that you come again next week for our work session. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.